All right, thirty, time for our budget meeting. All right, so at this time, we'll officially call the meeting board. I will stand for meditation, private prayers, um however you see fit to use your time. All right, this time, let's commission the sheriff, please.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the Bible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ma'am. At this time, I would like to have a roll call.
Commissioner Best of the Shepherd, Commissioner Isaac Owens, Vice Chairman Jay Wes Arani.
Here.
Chairman Joshua Derosa.
Live President. All right. Do we have a motion to approve today's agenda? It's been probably moved a second that we approved today's agenda, all in favor of you know by most of us. Motion carried, agenda is approved. All right. Do we have a motion to hear agenda item number one? It's been probably moved a second that we hear agenda item number one. Budget F flag twenty twenty six is open, further discussion. I trust that you all have had opportunities to look over the budgets and some of the figures. I looked at um different ones and some numbers may be have to be adjusted. But on top, I have a statement of proposed budget cuts um that you all should have in front of you. It's not a hefty list, it's just a start and for us to redirect funds in other places. But also I know you're just getting back, I'm gonna take a moment. I'm sorry if you have cell phones, please go ahead and put them on silent and vibrate. If you need to take a call, please do uh outside the doors, away from the um doors so that we may not hear our conversation. Also, this is a budget meeting and I believe that commentary comments are held to commissioners and uh city employees. Unless we're discussing items in which someone um of the public, we deem have expert knowledge or team to have experience in that area and can talk about it um you know to help us better deliberate and inform our decision making. So uh um while you all are talking, I read my portion. What I believe some actions that we need to take. Um as the costs continue to rise and the spending levels of state and federal funding declining, we are faced with difficult but necessary decisions to ensure the long-term financial health of the city. Um I, the chairman, propose FY budget reductions reflective of review of each department's expenditures, focused on areas where we can reduce or delay spending without jeopardizing essential services. These adjustments are not simply um about balancing the numbers, they're also about prioritizing how we invest in our limited resources. Now more than ever, we must direct more funding towards the scarce communities ensuring that those who are most in need see tangible improvements in their neighborhoods, infrastructure opportunities. By making targeted cuts such as reducing payments to outside agencies, scaling back certain equipment purchases, trimming discretionary service budgets, we can re- reallocate funds to programs that strengthen economic opportunity improved for all the life and build a more equitable Cordial for everyone. The goal should be physically responsible, being responsible and also be morally responsible. Meeting our budget challenge ahead, head on and investing the people in places that need us most. Um looking at the legislative budget, um one of the things that there's an increase of one hundred and thirty-two thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars. Proposed increase, we have it from last year. I suggest us nixing the ninety-six thousand dollars to other agencies or what have you. Um I think we can save money there and I think that money could be reallocated to another department such as community development. The executive budget, um this number may be a little off. I know we got different um versions of it and some adjustments over the last few weeks. Uh the technical services, um my recommendation in the executive um section is to um reduce technical service to a hundred thousand, which will leave right now it's one sixty-five. Um that's sixty-five thousand dollars. Also, other equipment, um reduce it to twenty-five, which I think the stated amount was forty thousand then asked for or requested. Um that would be a saving of fifteen thousand. Fire, um there's an increase of eighty-two four hundred and thirty-five thousand, um very minor, we have small equipment reduced by ten. And then probably the worst, there was an increase of lawn care. I would take that out with a savings maybe off because I think I forgot to add the other ten in there. I had two initial um versions of it, but somewhere between one hundred and eighty-six thousand and two hundred thousand dollars we can save. I think given where we are right now, um some action that we can take on this board, given our authority to um do the budget is use that saving to beef up and improve community development. Use the one hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars to put into community development. I think as we know, there are some issues with City Hall and if we can acquire funds or grants at some point to um do anything with City Hall, we also can um lease or utilize another building. Um the Bad Cop Building being one, for instance. Already have a really good setup that we can move our community development in and also use it as a part of it as a incubator for small businesses and nonprofits. Um I think when I called, the leasing amount per month was seven thousand, but willing to make adjustments for long-term lease. If we make these cuts, we'll be able to afford that. Um also, that was money left over in the legislative um department, our department of twenty-five thousand for damage and judgment. We can also use that to acquire the building and new spaces for community development, offices and nonprofits, small business incubator. Also move the thirty-five hundred dollars from workshops that we did not use for micro grants for small businesses and nonprofits. Some of the origins, and I kind of can understand why, some of the origins, fire, the library, which we need to do a lot of work. Just the media has relayed uh one side of it, but they, you know, they put where they put, you know, um water waste management is over, understandable though, that's a lot of infrastructure we need to upgrade, water distribution, over in the gas, what have you. So those are the departments that I identified that was over um their budget, about X amount of money. This is why I'm saying that, you know, we need to take a look at this budget and really do some, some things that we haven't done before. Um I've been up here for four years and we keep doing the same thing, that's not fit, some problems are working. The other thing, um the other thing is that, you know, people want to say we're in the red, um which technically that's not the case, because in the red, I mean you don't have the money at all. We have the money or what have you, um but people run with things. But I do think it's a cause to do something new. The positions that I wanted, um marketing, social media and marketing manager and community advancement manager, I appreciate that been approved, however, those was contingent upon looking at our whole government and making some cuts. We can't continue to hire without cutting. I think our government is traditionally old, double stacked, and we need a more efficient government uh for the times. We carry anywhere between nineteen and thirty vacancies from meeting to meetings in our HR department or what have you. And I, that is, you know, kind of off to me, especially when um we're in the situation we're in right now. So those are some of my quick recommendations um that I have.
May I address some of those?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just so the other elected officials will know. Um the ninety-six thousand in legislative, um there is the
IDC.
Right, IDC, I'm just saying they don't, they don't know. But it's the IDC, um and we have an agreement with IDC for industrial um development, um
That can be broken with one hundred and eighty days' notice.
And in the executive department for technical services, those are the contracts that we have because of course we have brought on um enter there. And so those are all the technical services contracts that we have for the upcoming year. And so that's why that amount was increased. Other equipment, IT is included uh in executive, which is uh bodily. And so he prepared a list of some items that uh require immediate attention and so that's why that mine item was increased to forty thousand dollars. Um yeah, because uh last year we bought computers at thirty-five and all of that was expensed except for a few thousand dollars. So the forty thousand dollars is based on immediate needs uh for IT. Oh, and wastewater treatment, there will be an adjustment in that department because of course we received a generator grant. And now that um a budget amendment was approved, we can do a journal entry and move that cost, which I think is let's see, one thirty-eight fifty-one, close to two hundred thousand dollars. So that will reduce some of the costs in the wastewater treatment plan. Of course, longer with the address.
Two hundred thousand.
Almost two hundred thousand, um I think it's all, let's see. And then of course, we had um POCO, Debbie Book Services, didn't they, about on twenty-four? Remember POCO because that was un- uh unexpected.
Right, they had to put in a new pipe that connected the oil to the distribution system because it had a holder. But I don't believe that Bill Ziegler did send.
POCO, that's been because that was late. Well, the one that was last year.
Now that was the total rehab of the
That's the one that's in here, yeah, that's the one that I'm referring to. I'm sorry.
That's one seventy-two thousand dollars.
Okay, that's, that's the one I'm referring to. Okay, and then we have the, um, we have the generator um grant and of course we will move those expenses.
So you want the generators paid for out of there?
For the generators? We've done journal entries, that's what I'm saying, some of the calls, we, we are still moving because of the generator grant. We made the budget amendment, then have to move some of the calls from any of the department. And I think some of the initially coded contingency to uh the grant line that we set up for the budget amendment. Trying to see what else, that two, three, five, four. Yeah, it was POCO, one sixty-nine, five, seven, three. And then we move, yeah, some of the going, we didn't really have cook. Um those were the major ones, um oh, building repairs, of course, those who came with the stairs, um we have a flat roof on this building. And so whatever company came in, I think they, how many years ago? Fifteen years ago, um I'm sorry. Okay, and so they put foam on top and then some type of bubble wrap, but anyway, it's flat. And so of course now we're getting leaks all over the place, including the stairs. So we're reaching out to a company to come in and take a look at it because it's something um more major than what West can deal with. And so that's why I increased uh building repairs because we want to have to address that. And hopefully, whatever work is done, instead of the flat, they can slant it so that the water would um drain down to the um to the drains, um trying to see. I think those are the ones. Oh, and then for, as far as professional services and legislative, the reason why that was increased is because now when we're um having to involve the city attorney in terms of uh addressing devastated housing, they have to send out the title search, they do all the legwork in terms of sending notices. And then of course, when those individuals are brought to court, then they come to court to represent the city. So that's why we have an increase in professional services in legislative.
Is that key, do we share that key with the county? I want to say something about the ninety-six thousand dollars as I was saying. We don't have to stay in the IDC. And I've been to IDC, part of IDC for three years and it's no um issue and thing with Grant. I like Grant, I think he does a fair job for the county in what we do. However, my experience with IDC is, like most places, they want to keep the same people at the table doing the same thing and making the decisions. And when we are, the same people are running around saying we're the ones that are in the red. So if we're in the red, we're gonna need to make some cuts. And I've spoken with the state attorney, the state attorney said we can pull out the IDC. The IDA, we cannot. We are, as state statute, that we have to stay in the IDA and this is part of our legislative budget. We need to move money to community um development because there's a lot of unaddressed needs in community development that we gotta do because we won't have enough money. As you all know, local government, state government just can't print money. We have to balance budgets and we gotta start in a way where, and the rarest people said, okay, let's, some of these partnerships gotta go by. That's just gonna be what it is. Um and when I addressed something with IDC, for instance, um with the golden people, keeping them in place because uh my issue with IDC is every year, the chairman rotates on the IDC. Well, they rotated right over because of issues and concern because they want to keep things the same way. And the state attorney and I had a conversation after one of the meetings and he said, well, you don't have to stay in it. Um he said, basically, you have a hundred and eighty days' notice. We need to utilize that ninety-six thousand dollars. I think Grant and the co- the power company in the county can do well in managing what they do now. Grant does a very great job um at what he does and it's not personal to him and I ain't even said it, but when I'm looking at this, you can't keep spending, hiring, and then there's no consequences or what have you. Um we're getting services, professional services here and there um for things, but we're not really doing anything to develop, train and keep people here. We're losing population. And if we don't make an investment in people, we're gonna keep losing people, keep losing tax base. The truck stops are nice, that's good transit money coming in here, dropping, leaving. But um at some point, we need some people to stay, we need some people to actually stop moving. Um we need to help our small businesses, state businesses, we need to help our nonprofits scale because they can also get grant money and money coming in that will help the city where the city don't have to lift in those areas. It will help reduce crime. So we, we need to address those issues and those concerns. And I think a better use of that ninety-six thousand dollars is put towards something that we actually, the city of Cordial is interested or should be interested in doing. I, I understand the IT needs, I know, um that's not internet and there's a lot of connection problems out there at Miss Debbie and at um the um the animal shelter as well. But I cannot fathom increases with us and we, 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 we we need to make a decision to pay people more money because we want to be competitive. But also, when I go places, I see some of the city employees having two jobs, you know, um that that doesn't make me feel good, I speak for myself or what have you, so I'm okay with that decision. But now we made that decision, now we have to make adjustments. You just can't have it all all the time, that's where we are, we gotta make compromises. And um those are modest compromises. As I said before, I have a plan ready to go to reap, um shake the whole government, that would save about half a million dollars or what have you. But that would come with some compromise, this is very modest um comparatively.
Well, I think cut IDC would be one of the worst things we could do. The uh industry that looks at coming here, the businesses that look at coming here are looking for incentives to come here. As a matter of fact, there's one looking to develop twenty-five acres that we all need to be talking about. And they're asking for an incentive because of our uh, because of our resume, our median household income. So lots of the industry looks at coming here, but you gotta be able to incentivize them. And through the IDC is where the incentives would come from. So that needs to be funded more, not less.
How long you been on IDC board? IDC, not IDA.
I'm never IDA.
Right, right, so you're not in the meetings with me. And what I'm trying to let you know is that the IDC would be okay, but we're not. We're okay, but at the end of the day, we got to make some hard char- choices. And the thing with IDC, Grant again does a great job, but I'll be honest with you. Um yes, incentivizing is one thing, but it's not like we going out to certain companies. I tell people all the time, I talk to Carl Som and New Orleans, they talk about job and industry, that's why you have them sent up in Atlanta. They said Georgia's the best place to do business for the last twelve, fifteen years. Carl Som and New Orleans have a job to do with bringing industries right here. So if really, if you really want to make that point, it's kind of still redundant because that's what our state representative's supposed to do, they're supposed to be waving the Cordial flag, Chris County flag in the other counties and cities they have and say, industry come to us or what have you. So we also got to put our representatives who get paid from the citizens of Georgia to work to do that job as well. And when we're sitting here looking at pulling out our um our general funds to cover the bases, something got to move. And this is why I get brutally honest. When I'm also looking at um the people that sit on the board that runs in the same circle you run in or what have you, the disrespect that they've shown me, not Grant, has been crazy. And I don't believe paying anybody to keep doing the same thing they're doing in a disrespectful way in which they do it. I addressed it at the last IDC meeting, they didn't move, so since they don't move, we need to move our money. And to be honest with you, Commissioner, I'm mostly talking to you because again, as I told you last time, Commissioner Rees, if you don't vote for it, they can't pass it. So if they, if Commissioner or whoever want to pass a budget, me and you gonna have to stay at home and pass a budget where we want to see some things. Our people have been asking, what have we done? And if we don't do anything this year in this budget to show our values, we don't deserve to be back in these seats. These are the hard pieces that you make and we don't have to switch and do some things differently. That's the situation we in, so I ain't really talking to nobody else but you, to be honest, because you can vote with Commissioner Shepherd and Commissioner Ron. I know how Commissioner Shepherd gonna vote, but I'm telling you, it is not time to say we need to do something different with our city government and budget. You know, regardless, because a lot of these people that we've been in partnership are the ones, when you look at things in the community, what we hear, when we see on Facebook are the same people that saying how bad of a job we're doing when I have differences with our city managers, but our city managers have been doing their thing for screening out messes for, that was created the last ten, fifteen years in recovery money. But people don't know that or what have you. Um that wasn't done right. So, but those are the same people that wanna talk about how bad we're doing when the people they ran with weren't messing the city up in the first place. We had four years and they don't have twenty and thirty years. The problem wasn't created the last three or four years, they've been here. And again, with the IDC, I go to the meetings, I hear what they're doing, Grant does an excellent job, they will be okay. But what's not okay is our community development department. We got a new person that knows what to do with it and we need to invest in it.
So this would be as kind of clarity, you're saying subtracting or losing, IDC losing this ninety-six thousand dollars is not gonna gross the effect overall what they have to do for our community.
Right, right. They, between, between what the power commission charging people for light bill and between what the county makes, they can shove in and put that money, the, the money that they'll lose for us. We're, and we also got to understand leverage. We have a county breathing down, us talking, we need to pay more for E nine, one one, okay? Okay, we're gonna have to make some change. The city gotta be interested in what the city needs to do. We can't keep them bullied by the county and anybody else. And so, you know, that's where I'm standing, all right, yeah, I'll take that, we're in the red. Let's come out the red by cutting a lot of partnerships, that don't mean us no good in no way. We pay fees and things, even the crossing guard situation. We shouldn't be paying for the crossing guard, the school board got more money than the city and the county put together. That is the school board's job, they should have That is the school board's job, they should have a contract, do they have a contract with us, do they give us anything for pay? Before we got here and it's pissing me off to be honest, before we got here, what has happened is. If the county and the school board don't wanna pay for something the city has been paying for. But now they wanna criticize and say, oh, y'all in trouble, we're in the red and we're trying to put people in places to do a better job. But we wanna sit here and pass the same budget and just give out money to them, no. Anytime somebody say we have a problem, I, I have, we agree. But I started thinking about how to fix the problem, a lot of times people don't like how I fix the problem. Cause any of your points in my, I agree, I agree with you, yeah, we gotta do something different, let's do something different there. I know, I know the IDC will be okay. But the question will, if the city keep paying other bills, will we be okay?
The IDC is funded from the city, the county and the power commission.
I just said that, sir.
That's what I'm saying, so when you're cutting a third of their funding, and you think they're gonna be okay?
Yeah, I think they're gonna be okay, again.
And then you sit there, last year, I mean, while we talking about the county, the county rolled back the mileage rate last year. They didn't go with the increase like we went with the tax increase that came. So this year, they gonna have an increase. On all the residents are about to have a big increase too, from that, from that issue last year, so they're gonna be up in the milch. So, and.
You mean the county?
The county, I sure am, but so you were just talking about all the county, they gonna be okay, they're not okay either.
No, but I'm asking.
They're not okay.
See, when you talk commissioner Ron, your ladies must live in the county, but we can't be interested in the county. Because the county people are the ones talking about how bad of a job we done. The, the county gotta handle their business and we gotta handle our business. That's just what it is, and it's not the great collaboration or partnerships, but it is to say we gotta be interested in what we need to do. And. Everybody gonna have to fend for their own at some point. If I had it my way, like I said, we need to look at everything that we paying for that we should not be paying for. Because we have grown in certain ways. But with that, you're gonna have to make some cuts and then we're looking at everything being cut on the federal level. The state having freezes to come down the pipeline, that's gonna do something to local funding. So maybe L meg and every other grant that we then get, it won't be probably the same amount of money. Green block grant either, we don't know what these next two or three years look like. It's just time to tighten our belts. But we can't worry about how the IDC gonna be, especially when they ain't worried about us.
How can you say that they ain't worried about us? I mean, who, who, who guy loves Indian River and the truck stops, they're boosting our sales tax. And, and helping offset some of our expenditures through these new truck stops and all that, who, who brought that? I mean, come on now.
How many meetings have you been to, ha- ha- you been in that room, you have not? And, and, no, you have not, you have not been in the IDC meetings commissioner, you have not, I have. And like I said. Yes, cause that's what the chairman does.
That's right.
What I'm telling you is. They'll be able to come up with ninety six thousand dollars or whatever they need to come up with. To pull up their shortcomings. We need to come up with the money, we need to come up with to be okay. And again, part of the thing is. One of the things I've been doing the last three or four years is watching and watching who's in connection and who's in cahoots and. Basically understanding how Cordial operates a little bit better. There's people on the IDC. The power company, the county, and they wanna keep everything in the same way, the same players. I don't believe paying all the money when we are in charge to give the people that wanna keep things the same way. I just don't. I, I, I brought the conversation to the IDC, they did nothing about it. And so at the end of the day, when I'm looking at our budget, since you're not gonna be fairing right to us, then that's, that's fine, they'll be fine and. And to be honest with you, the way it works. Those places come to us or come to Grant. And when they come to Grant, again, like you said, incentives are good, but it ain't like we've been seeking places, the people want publics here. I don't see nobody, I don't see nobody going and trying to get a publics. Because there are certain neighborhoods and communities that meet the income threshold for our publics. Won't be anywhere over here, so there are some things that can be actually a little bit more actively done. Yeah, maybe your family don't work at the truck stops, but that was my college job and I'm gonna tell you, it don't make much money. So to be proud about paying wages coming in here, you know.
I'm just saying there's things looking at us and some of the things you just named might be looking at us right now. And they, let me just say, looking at us.
Yeah, but we gotta look at this. This, that, this all made for it right here. And that's another independent contract, the purposes of one, that's going out beating the bushes, getting industry, getting stuff coming here as well. So it's not just on us. There's other ways you can find the IDC as well.
Well, we don't legislate, we could cut everybody, all of us just go to one event each year. I mean, you're fifty seven hundred dollars over yourself, you've spent fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty five. Seventy eight cents on education in a year, you've spent one thousand seven sixty nine.
Yeah, because you just like the last white man that said, nature don't believe training is important.
I don't believe the city owes me to education where I go.
Laws are changing, when laws are changing, you need to be up on laws, part of the stat nation is we're not even open to sit up till the full. Toolbox that is stayed alive and, and when you talk about my training, yes, but I told you all when we sat here, so y'all probably have been all these. All these four years, the chairman, if people in the community call me commissioner, that's fine, I don't make struggles about that. But I'm not a commissioner, I'm, I'm the chairman. And people don't, and, and when people label something, they think everything is same, y'all have continually. Tried to make me the same as y'all, my budget shouldn't even be the same as y'all because there's certain boards that I have to be on. So my travel's gonna be more expensive than y'all's, but you ain't saying that about Commissioner Reeves, he ain't spent half his time in here and he still went over.
I said everybody goes.
No, I'm, I'm saying you conveniently pointed me out, you should've said yours and Commissioner Reeves are, it's over. And you do math for math, mine's is not that much over when I've been here the whole, almost four years and he's been here less than two years. But his is still over, so when you look at that, my travel's proportional being that I'm chairing, I have to be the certain things. You can point out facts, the fact is I'm over, but then you add context, you don't see, you, it don't seem as right, you trying to make it seem. And I go to the National League of Cities.
To me, I didn't compare me to anybody else.
Yeah, yeah, but that's, that's smart, cause you don't believe in training. That, that, that's the thing, you don't believe in education and training. But I go to the National League of Cities, which is further, because I don't particularly like the GMA. The GMA split the same kind of white supremacy Republican training that we hear all the time. I go to the National League of Cities where I actually learn something. That's the difference between my training. And I actually cut over the last two years, I didn't go to the city summit because I was aware of that, so I have been coming back. And if we talk about, I cut the per diem. I let it charge on us, instead of y'all taking cars and y'all swiping for three to four to five hundred dollar meals. We did per diems and I met the city for a calculation, how much we used to spend versus what we spend now, I, I get to get that. Those numbers in those figures, because I like to know the difference of things, but we don't have those numbers in front of us. When I went to the first conference, I saw commissioners, all right lobster steak and lamb. Three or four hundred dollar meals. And so at the end of the day, when I came back, I said, we need a per diem. And every time it came up for an increase, I argued against the increase. So we gonna say who's spending what, let's be fair and thorough. And, and if we being honest, we can talk about the years of legislation with how much we paid lawyers. One of the biggest lawsuit that we had because you voted with Ray and Barti to keep rolling. That cost us a lot of money, which also ballooned the budget. You also been out here telling lies with everybody who wanting to get rid of me, that brought out all these lawsuits that also spent money from the city. Eh, eh, if you sit to the philosophy, eh, eh, if you, I'm, I'm not saying that, so I'm not done, I'm not done. You'll talk for a minute, but let me finish and I'm about to finish, I'm about to finish, I'm about to finish. When you out here telling all these lies and, and banding with people on a recall and different things, it ballooned. Our legislative budget to the point we had to change insurance. Instead of having the discipline saying Josh Derrisaw won these four years, let's work with him when we can and we put our next man up next time. That's what you do when you're trying to do right by people. Know what you did, you was cheerleading and all the lawsuit came in that kept rolling in and we had to pay for it. And we had to pay more for insurance, so if you wanna talk about cost, I love to see the cost, city manager and the finance director, how much do your lawsuits don't cost over five years? For people like. If you really wanna get to the needed rate of what has also blown this budget up. So, let's put things in context. You can talk about traveling, racism will kill every time and that's why this community is not growing. Because instead of doing the right thing by people, no matter how they look. Instead of doing the right thing by people despite how they look, y'all get upset when something don't go your way. And causing us more money. So also that's what has ballooned the budget over the years. The lawsuits, if you were morally incorrect and that's what I said about Williams. A person of integrity would've said this. I think we should keep rolling because of how he stepped in, but you know what, it's not my job, I have been voted out. It's left up to the next commission to do it, that's what somebody with integrity would do. What y'all did, y'all tried to slip it in because you know we was changing, but that's the difference between integrity and not.
Now here's the reason why I voted for Roland, Roland was here less than a year. Roland is the only man, only city manager that's got this, this city a ten million dollar grant. In the short time that he was here, so he got us a ten million dollar grant, showed us the best way possible to get it. The county applied for the same type grant, he got us a ten million dollar grant, two months after he got us a ten million dollar grants, we fired. So we gonna say, thank you for getting us ten million dollars, you're fired, I'm not gonna do that, I'm gonna support the man. That just got this city a ten million dollar grant, if his contract would've come up in January, I would've voted for him. If his contract would've come up in November, December like it did, I'd voted for him. That's why I voted for Roland, he sat there and we're spending the money that Roland went out on Liam and guys. I've always supported Roland because of his efforts.
But that has nothing to do with the budget. Roland also caused us a lot of money too, while the first lawsuits that we had was because Roland didn't do something he was supposed to do. So you can go back and forth of why you got Roland, but let's be honest with you, Angela Reddick came up for city manager. When Roland was on the docket, she had the same amount of experience, you voted for Roland cause you look more like you and you want this black woman to send up here. Yes, but when she came up the first time, she was also, with every bitch, you didn't know her name, you didn't know her name.
Day different from any city manager we've had in the last thirty years and what I mean by. It isn't a racial statement.
I'm just saying, it's obvious, I ain't said it was a racial statement, I'm just saying it's obvious.
She sits here and she goes and works with every department and brings financial decisions to the commission for us to make. Other city managers for the last thirty years have made financial decisions to keep the city from going in the red. And we have made the financial decisions to put us in the red based on the stuff that Miss Angela has brought to us. It's a different type of management structure. That's what it is, the others just sat there and knew we couldn't go over X amount of dollars. And they can, and that's what they did, they kept us, the city operated within X amount of dollars, they've done that for thirty years. And then this, our Angela has brought this decisions before, it's brought needs from each and every department before us to make the financial decisions. We made these, but we have not come and addressed revenue issues. We've hit expenses for the last four years, but we have not addressed revenues. And when we increase expenses without increasing revenues, that puts us in the red. This budget right here is red, last budget was red, this is one point two million dollars into fund balance. And your proposal of sitting here and going one hundred and eighty six, you're talking about relocating, you're not saying cut it or save it. You're talking about moving.
Right, because at the end of the day.
That's not safe.
At the end of the day, part of this is the budget already. I, I, I took, let me, let me finish, I took the money left over from this past year, not money going into. The new budget and that is the difference, I would have, that money has already said we're gonna use it, but. To that complicated confusion point that you just made, the whole thing is, at the end of the day. You can sit and talk about why you voted for Roland, it was wrong, at the end of the day, it was just wrong. But also at the same time, to sit here and say where we haven't addressed revenue. We have addressed revenue, you have one perspective on revenue, I have a different perspective on revenue. Or what have you, but at the end of the day, none of that changed the fact that we're here and we're not in the red. The red would be we have no, the money not to cover it. We have the money to cover it. I don't like how we covering it. I agree with that. But that's the difference, I'm gonna really sit down, I know commissioner has had something.
Okay, just point of clarification. In terms of bringing financial decisions, in terms of bringing the budget to the city commission. As city manager, that's what I'm supposed to do. In previous administrations and, and I didn't just pull this out of the air, this is what I have been told by commissioners. Is that the other city managers just came and said, he go approve the budget, you all didn't know what were in these line items. The very first budget meeting that we had, I presented information so we could go through and you all could see what. What's in the budget, that was not being done before. And then in terms of, you know, expenses revenue, we also have to remember. When I came on board, the fund balance was declining. And so we did increase the fund balance and that made a difference. And fund balance goes up and down depending on expenses, we paid off some loans and so of course paying those off. You're gonna see a decrease in fund balance, but then if you don't get into anything else, then you're gonna see it come back up. So it's up and down, but when I came on board, it was in a steady decline. And of course, with any organization, well, I shouldn't say any organization, but most cities. You're gonna have a low in revenue, uh, August through October because we have not seen our business licenses. Property taxes, uh, alcohol license have not been renewed. Uh, alcohol license have not been renewed. So of course there are times when you're going to experience, you know, okay. We need to look at expenses and I tell the department here is okay, we're in that timeframe where we really have to look at what we're spending. Because you're gonna have revenue coming in, you know, once we start in October, those months, so. What I try to do is be transparent, make sure you all know what's in the budget. And that has not been done before. You know, I could have continued saying. He go prove this for me, but that's not how it's done. You bring it to the city commission. So that you all can see and that's why I have this. So if you ask a question, what's in this line item, I can look it up and see what's in there. So that's just the way I present the budget. I don't just come and ask you all to. You know, approve something that I've just put together, but then also. As elected officials, you all need to know, okay, we need to purchase whether it's police, fire. You know, we have sploths, we have two sploths, but the thing is to just make you all aware, this is what we're doing with the funds that we have. And so I just, you know, wanted to say that because I didn't want it as seen as if. You know, just bringing everything and I'm not supposed to, uh, or you know, just a different style, management style. Again, you know, I bring it so you all can make decision then whatever is. Approved with the budget, that's what is approved and that's what, you know, we have to operate and live with. So I just wanted to say that.
And you've done a very good job with that and bringing it all and clarifying. You have, you. You've definitely been more transparent than people in the past, most definitely.
And I don't think anybody was arguing that you haven't. Yeah, I don't have anything to say about the budget.
Well, I think that as we're talking about this and the concerns that we're looking at. Of some of the proposed or some of the suggested things that we have. I think that our overall goal is to make sure that the city, um, continues to move forward and. We we talked a year, we talked last year, uh, about having to make. So this will be the year that we would have to make some tough decisions about the budget because of the things that we had coming up. And when we go back and talk about things that come up unexpectedly, you know, we had to pay right at four hundred forty thousand dollars for natural gas. That we just gotta build all of a sudden out of equipment stock for that. And you know, so those things come up and that was money that was not purpose to be spent. Of that, but that came from, for lack of a better word, and not brought off anybody, but from a mismanagement, simply put. You know, and when we talk about things that have been mismanaged along the way. Uh, we each, each department, each of us here have had some certain things as a result of, um. Gross mismanagement, um, in in so many areas. And we've had to try to pull in those things and bring them in and this is just another one of those times where we, uh, have to. I would say with the, uh, IDC that, um. We are appreciative of the job that they're doing and that they have done and that they can hopefully will continue to do. But we definitely have to look at where we can, uh, get funded, get more money to do the things that we have to do. Uh, that goes without saying, so, um, it's definitely worth us having to go back and look at this, uh. With a strong, you know, I mean, even when we say ninety-six thousand dollars. Okay, maybe not ninety-six thousand dollars, but we have to look at, we're gonna have to make some cuts there some kind of way. Because we still have to go back and put this money in place because there are things that we still are obligated to uphold. And my other, one more thing, you know, when we talk about you, what we're dealing with right now with our lobby here. Uh, you know, that's right in front of us now. And, um, to hear one side and then to know that there's something else that comes over the result of that. We don't know how we're gonna have to deal with that alone either, and that's something that falls directly on us. So the expectation for us to handle that is going to, um, come up as well, but it's like any other thing. You have to look at what it is, make some adjustments and, uh, allow for the unexpected to come up. And I, that's where we are now because when we talked last year, we knew that somewhere along the line, this is gonna have to come up.
Um, it wasn't seven thousand, but. Said negotiate with that. Uh, and that, and that's my point. We have to do. Something different. Because we understand that we have issues here at city hall, but part of the issue too, we have a building. In that backup building that is, it's nice in a certain area, it's still up to date. But the city also have an interest making sure it don't look like the building is beside it. And so part of that is if we can use it, use it, utilize it in a way that would make sense for us. And and we're, you know, having the cost, but also have a part of it. Being a community hub with community development inside of it, um. Which is also why I paid, I proposed the way of paying for it and not adding it in addition to or what have you. Um, and and those are just my pieces and and I I'll say this, if it's clear, I'll say this very clearly. The IDC, my issue with the IDC is right now it doesn't care to have a city at the table. Not Grant, but other people that's among the IDC. And if they don't care to have a city at the table, then they don't need our money with them. Uh, and the problem is it shouldn't be who is chairman or who is whatever. At that person at the table, you should recognize them and respect them enough at that table. Today they're doing it to me, but tomorrow it could be somebody else. And so that is my problem with them. If you don't care to have me at the table, okay, I won't sit at that table no more and I'm not gonna bring my debt, manage our money. That's just how I, I am and how I see things. I had a conversation with them, they didn't budge. Apologies are one thing, but I look for action and they have not changed it. And I went through the proper channels, I talked to our city attorney, our city attorney said, yes, you can do it. And so when I'm looking at our budget, at the end of the day, we have to make decisions for the city. Partnerships have sometimes hindered us. Cordill has to have a reconditioning. Cordill has not had a shift since the shift been on this commission. That was election in twenty twenty-one. That was new ideas, new perspectives brought to this commission in twenty twenty-one. If we have not did anything different, then we are the problem. How can we ask people instead of we're gonna get in, we're gonna make things better? And sign up year in and year out for the same old thing? I was vocal my first two years about this. I stopped because when the people at the commissioner's chair, I said, well, hell, I don't have another vote. Ain't no sense in being vocal about it. But we're at a time where if we don't shift and do something different, what was it all for? What was it all for? We shouldn't be having a budget, center him looking at the budget, looking at the overs, looking at the proposals. And not make any changes. Our community development been bad the four years I've been here or what have you. Uh, and I will say, I questioned everything. Uh, so. I know that the commission before didn't do that, but I wasn't a part of the commission before then. Uh, you know, uh, which is why, like I said, that one of the first things I did before it was sworn in. Was rolling plan to restructure the government. Uh, but. Our action and values is showing where we put our money. And if we keep neglecting community development, that is showing what we feel and what we think about the community. So I do think it needs to be a shift in where we put money. And if we're not increasing money in other places that are are needed. And we do need to take a look, eh, like I said, the crossing guards. Situation. And my family's a cross, a crossing guard. They stopped me a moment and said, hey, cuz we ain't got a raise in a long time. I said, and I ain't say it in the first two or three times, cause I ain't wanna, you know, I ain't wanna say it. But then about the third time he asked me, I said, well, cuz we shouldn't even be paying for the crossing guards anyway. You know, uh, that's just what it is. It don't come down to favor our family for me. We need to start making other people pay their bills. Because I'm saying people on the boards, the county and the school board, probably, ah, y'all don't know what to do with the money. So let's show them we do know what to do with our money and that's not give it to them and we shouldn't be giving it to them. That is easy to me, that comes in sense. Everybody wanna talk about how new education I got, that comes in sense right there. That baller play comes in sense. So I would like for us to take this budget, look at it and see what we paying money into and what we don't need to be paying money into or not. Just approve things as is. Look at, I I challenge each one of these commissioners to look at expenses in revenue. And to see when we come up with a better budget. That's my challenge. I went through it one time when we were first sent out there, when the numbers changed a bit, I went through it again. Uh, or what have you, but that's our job. It's actually go through and look at the numbers.
May I add, um. Just for clarity as well, that six thirty twenty twenty-five expenditures, those are going to, uh, change. Because of course expenses come in for fifty year twenty twenty-five and also. Uh, when we have the audit down during entries that are made that, you know, kind of, uh. Uh, make adjustments to certain items, so, um, as those numbers continue to update, I keep you all updated on those as well. So these are, no, I'm saying these are not for each department, these are not final numbers for June thirty twenty twenty-five. Because even, you know, in July, for instance, some of the computer equipment that was ordered. Um, it was ordered before July first and so the bill may come in. For, and I use in executive for instance, four computers right now is showing twelve thousand five eighteen ninety-seven. But once the expenses are up, are updated, um, I think it's probably a few thousand dollars that will be left. Because the full expenses not there yet. And then as the auditors come in. You know, they make adjustments in journal entries, so that's why. We're at this point where we are as of today with June thirty twenty twenty-five, but numbers will change until. The year is completely closed out and that's through the audit.
We gonna have to make the cuts in my opinion, um, we gonna have to make the cuts and. See what we can go from there. I'm progressive in that, not that type of progressive. So what's the next step for, from this, um. Because we, we gotta provide some type of clarity if we get rid of leave here for. Our city managing departments to kind of know where we wanna go with this, um, commissioner. Rainey, do you have any solutions how we get, you know, closer? Uh, I'm gonna ask each commissioner this, uh, solutions.
I do think we need to decrease the, uh, education and travel to five thousand per commissioner until the things get better. I also know that E nine one one is, there's supposed to be a meeting on that. So there is a possible change with that up or down. We mainly are gonna need to look at, uh, some revenue changes. And I do think we gonna have to look at services, uh, on that aspect because we did a tax increase last year. So then we gonna just have to look at some services and fees.
City manager, could you explain our supposedly tax increase we did last year?
We did not increase the military, but we did not roll it back. The increase was based on assessments. And so by not rolling back the military to the rollback, uh, index. And it was saying, it was advertised as a property tax increase because we did not roll back the military.
So let me break it down to the people because people keep saying this and and it's ridiculous to keep going on this. It's like you go to the store and you have a membership discount and the membership discount was twenty percent. And then we go to the store that counts that membership discount no more, you're not getting twenty percent anymore. We did not raise the price, that T-shirt is still fifteen dollars. The only thing is now, you don't get that twenty percent discount on that fifteen dollars. When people say we raised taxes, we did not, I'm atomically opposed to raising city taxes. Because I know if we raise city property taxes, it impacts people that live in the city more than other. Because the city has to pay city, county and school board taxes. We did not raise taxes. Then a lot of people upset because property is being assessed higher. So when you have, we elected not to do the rollback, plus now your property is worth more. It's gonna look like we raised your taxes, but we did not raise your taxes. That's misinformation. You, you have to be factually and contextually based. You can't just say stuff. Like we, we did not. My parents own a fixed income. Even if I vote selfishly, I'm not gonna vote to raise their property taxes.
We control the mileage by not rolling it back, we went along with an increase. That was based on the assessment. We kept our mileage rate the same. We have the option of rolling it back. And keeping our tax revenues the same. We did not, our tax revenues increased by keeping the mileage rate the same. The county last year did roll back their mileage to keep their taxes from going up on their constituents.
But we also can raise taxes, which we did not. We can raise the mileage rate, which we did not. So you, you're speaking generally. You, you speak in general, but you gotta like the technical. You don't comprehend a lot of stuff. You sit here and talk about stuff not even related, what we talking about? Like, I don't have a problem with comprehension, I have a problem when people are saying stuff that's not the case. We had an option, we always have an option to raise the mileage rate, we did not. Again, we stopped giving a discount because if, if we wouldn't have, if you're talking about winning the red, what do you think would have been then? Like, so you can't have both things at one time. And as far as the travel, that's a lot of things. The only thing you got to come up with is twenty thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand dollars to save anything? Because you don't like going to travel, you don't like going to get any education when you need it or what have you. I ask you a legitimate question, cause I believe in. I ask you a legitimate question, cause I, believe it or not, I respect the vis- the, the, the people's vote. They voted you in. I ask you a question, but the only thing you can come up with is twenty five thousand dollars because we travel too much. That's the only thing you can come up with. Out of this whole package, out of all these departments, you can look at legislation and at most. Come up with twenty five thousand dollars that we need to save on.
Oh, no, I said adjust, we gonna have to adjust revenues based upon the decisions we've made. And I think most of these budgets are very fair and broken down. Based upon what we got going on, and, uh, I mean, the fire department, they needed what they needed. And the rescue truck that they are running has helped with ISO ratings that he's proposing to get. The rescue truck is a much needed thing because our ISO rating has gone to a two. And it make you get lower. But these savings are going to everybody, everybody in the city and the county right here around us within five miles. Of a fire station are getting the benefits of us having the auto aid agreement and the ISO rating low. Every, every resident from the side.
The reason you preach consolidation so much is because the city already doing enough for the county. You might as well run for a county seat, but the county interest ain't, can't be all interest every time.
It's everybody's interest.
It, it, not necessarily, not when it comes to.
Because of a fire rating, it is everybody's interest.
We're not giving a fair shake when it comes to, and as far as raising revenue. In a poverty community, the, the biggest revenue y'all talked about is raising water bill. The people in this community don't need another utility raise, especially when we're making a profit from it of almost a half a million dollars. Like, we, I don't know how you. As I say, our only employees have additional jobs because they need it. And when you're talking about raising revenue. I just, I, I, I can't.
How, how is the city's revenue? You derive revenue from three things, fines, fees and tax.
And who is that gonna hit the most?
Fines and tax, no, you have to.
It gonna hit your poverty people the most.
It's gonna hit every resident of the city of Cordill based upon the services that they're wanting and need. Not to mention we're needing to expand these services.
Yeah, but if you got a thousand dollars and another person got a hundred dollars, it's gonna hit that hundred dollar person more than it hit that person that has a thousand dollars. That's the key. So I get revenue, but at the end of the day, we got to do it strategically and smart. Because people ain't gonna keep making penny wages here, and then people paying high bills, they gonna take their butt where they going, run rides and tipping. I represent the people that make the hundred dollars, not the thousand dollars. So I'm always bringing their interests forward. I'm somewhere in between, but I remember when it was only have that hundred dollars. But Commissioner Owens.
Um, I'll briefly answer the question, I think we definitely have to go back and look, and we're gonna have to look at it, uh, a little bit more closely. Because, you know, we talked in the past about, um, services that businesses come to our community, some different things like that. And how we have across the scale have, you know, everybody's paying the same fee, we might need to look at those. That's gonna be another way to bring in some more revenue for us, and we have to definitely look at that. While at the same time, not so much put in on the, uh, individuals of the lower income bracket. To make them force them to pay that, because we know when these new businesses come or however they're coming. They come prepared to, uh, wanna be in our community, and we have not across the board. Uh, looked at being able to charge them the way we need to prop- properly charge them. We've also had, uh, businesses that have come to us asking for our help, uh, to do different things. And while we have been able to help them, we've not reaped the benefits of, of being able to help them as we've done in the past. Um, and it, and, and as it is with anything and any budget, wherever you're at, you have to look at things and you have to tighten it up. And that means that we have to look at how we can actually function silently while doing everything that we done. So it's gonna require us just to look at each line, uh, and just see. And, you know, whereas five, five hundred dollars in one space, those five hundred dollars can add up if we can see what we can look at. Because while we are adjusting our budget, we also have to be realistic, nothing is getting cheaper of services that we get. I think Ms. Debbie, in one of her presentations, she shared a, a draw or something that you all had to order. How the prices have gone from one place to another, but at the same time, that price is going up, but we still have to offer that service. So we have to be realistic when we look at that and see where it's going, because it's gonna constantly come back, so we definitely gotta do that. And, you know, maybe it might not be, and I'm using this as an example, it might not be the full ninety six thousand dollars. But we have to really look at how we can, can look at those costs and those cuts that it can benefit us at the end. Because, um, we have a new community development person. The expectation for that person is to do, is to put community development where it needs to be at to bring it up. But we also know that means there's gonna be some funding that's gonna have to go there because it's been near enough for a long time. So we have to be realistic and think it along the lines.
Well, my concern is that we have two industrial costs here in, in, within the city of Cordill. Where our community, the planning, community development person and the IDC working together, would that be more beneficial to Cordill?
What, what do you, what I look?
That, I, I know that, that our areas will bring industry into our communities. I'm saying, if our community knew the personal work of these.
Right.
I just see now, would it be more benefit that they started, even though we have to make cuts?
Right.
We might have made some cuts, or we, these two entities do work together to bring us forward.
Right, I agree with you.
Yeah.
Uh, but it'll still be pulling, it'll be a pulling, yes.
Right.
If you want, yeah.
Right.
Unless you serve interest going at the, um, three hundred and pay the road. I'm saying, that's the area that's developing, and I just want.
Right.
And, and the good, the special idea is that all the candidates, IDC, what we doing, yeah, let's build them in there for five years more.
They tried to do something with that, kind of difficult.
Off three hundred.
Like I said, with IDC, it, it's not even to the point that I don't think. Grant does a phenomenal job. Grant has never made a decision or, um, talked about something, or someone called him and entertained without calling me. And fully, you know, keeping their breast to it. But I'm talking about the actual board members and who sits around that, or what have you. That's the way you do things, they're not interested in working mutually with the city. But they want our money. Um, our opinions don't matter, um, or what have you, I saw that, like I said, at the last meeting, or what have you. Um, and I've been seeing it the last three, four years I've been on the board, um, or what have you. And so. When we have these interests now, computing interests, we have to choose what will help us and our citizens a little bit better. And I just think that at the end of the day, between the power commissions money and the counties' money. And, you know, um, that they will be okay and they will cover it, or what have you. But you, you can't have people that's complaining about how we have mismanaged funds. On that, but then they keep their hand open for our money at the same time. That just don't make sense to me. Um, that's like one of my cousins asking me for money, and then I said, well, like you don't have as much as you used to. Why did he ask me for money then? You know, it don't make sense to me, so, um. What I did, I looked at it and I tried not to touch the departments as much as I could. Because I know they have needs and costs going up. So when I look, I look at ledger, slated budgets, or what have you. And if we actually go to trainings and bring things back, it would profit the city, or what have you. Um, and we're talking about a small amount of money, um, when we integrate the scheme of things. Um, so that's just where I stand with that, but I, again, my challenge is for each one of you to look at it. And have a broader conversation about what things we think is absolutely necessary. And, and, and give service some things a step to where we have to keep and do. Of course, um, you know, mostly that is retirement and insurance things. And a bit of top of each department, uh, but some other things, um, you know. Could be, um. Some other things could be, um, looked at, you know, on down the list for each one of them, um. Because I'm highly analytical, like one of the things is, uh, I don't know, city manager, Mr. Wade, the clinic. For instance, I've asked for a cost analysis on that for the last two years, I see that. Now, have all the costs came in for the clinic? Cause let's see, thirty thousand dollars remain there.
We have another bill that is due, but I think we're gonna have a credit on that bill if I remember correctly. So all the costs is not in for the clinic, but if I remember, David put that together and I sent that out for the clinic. I have to go back through my email because David did put something together for the clinic. It was whatever year it was, uh, I don't know if it was twenty two or twenty three, but I, I'll go back and find that.
And, and so let me be specific. What I mean by cost analysis, what I was told was that because of the service we provide for the clinic, that it keeps our health insurance down. Where, where is that line? That's what I need to see in it. Like, how are we saying that it keeps our health insurance down? I can understand that if you're not going to the hospital or your doctor and you're going to the clinic, or what have you. Then it is far different unless, I get that, that it's like me going to the health department for something instead of following my insurance, right? If I qualify, but I still wanna see the numbers, uh, in a way that makes sense to me. And I, I don't remember seeing that, um, and what I mean by the numbers specifically. Does it save us more than, um, cause the cost is two hundred and thirty thousand dollars? Is it saving us more than two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, or how much more than two hundred and thirty thousand dollars is it saving us?
There's a lot to that. Number one, you have to sit there and get it underwriting from the underwriter both ways, with the clinic and without the clinic. And then you sit there with the number of employees that we have, you, each employee is sitting here drawing a benefit. From being able to buy the prescription drugs from the clinic, they're being able to buy them at a reduced cost. So there's a lot of savings that you don't even see right there in the numbers that are on each employee that's sitting here getting a prescription. Uh, from that clinic, where they getting their prescriptions from there. There's, there's a lot to the savings right there. That you're not even, that is gonna be very hard, cause it's gonna affect each and every employee that has a prescription there. To get those numbers that you're talking about. You're gonna have to sit there and get that employee to sit there and go back and see what it's gonna cost for him to get his prescription from Walmart, CVS or. As opposed to thirty clinic.
So you're saying we're, we're paying for something, but we can't analyze how much it's saving us?
Always saving, I mean, they, it, you, you gotta get David to do the underwriting through the insurance company on the specific number you're asking about right there.
And we should add it to the specific numbers. Thinking that what we can save, what we cannot save.
And how, how, how is that, how, how many of our employees are actually using it? Do a good number of our employees use it for that purpose? So that will give us a good way of being and figuring out the difference, okay?
Good, just get us the numbers.
I get me and Emra speak for myself.
All right, anything else we have? Do we have a need for executive session? No?
Okay.
At this time? Anything else, ring back? At this time, um. Uh, entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Uh, the meeting has been properly adjourned at six fifty six P M. I'm fairly, I'd be known by voice, well, aye.